Let's go ahead and start the meeting.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's February 18, 2022 revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, meetings to the first year Hills Regional Schools, which is school committee will be conducted both in person and remote until further notice. In-person attendance is limited to VHRSD, school committee members, superintendent, district and school administrators. No in-person attendance of members of the public was permitted at this time. However, the meeting may be accessed remotely through the above coordinates. Agenda items listed are those recently listed by the chair and not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee recorder and will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. And with that announcement, I will start the meeting with a call of the role. Cory Sprague.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Here.
William Fields.
Here.
Molly Thomas. Absent. Bonnie Bond.
Here.
Sean Stephen.
He's absent.
Absent. Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Steve Bannon, Chair, is absent and Rich Dehony, Vice Chair, is present. As noted, Steve Bannon is not present today. He is pending to the nuptials of his son Josh. So on behalf of the committee, we wish Josh and the entire Bannon family congratulations on that. And the only downside is that you're stuck with me for this evening. With that, we'll jump. Want to move together?
Yeah, if that's okay.
So yeah, we'll jump right to the show presentation because those folks I believe should be ready to go.
Yeah, so I'm sorry about this. Obviously, we had some technical difficulties getting onto Zoom. We should be all set now. There are 14 panelists and 17 attendees. And I'll introduce, I mean, I can introduce everybody, but we're going to start with the Stoke report. I'll introduce Lily, who's the co-host or now a co-host. So you, Lily, can share slides and then if you could introduce Jish and Jen and Maya, that'd be great.
Wonderful. Hi, everyone. So nice to be here with you today, even though it's virtual. Um, great. Just give me one second. Can everyone see a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, all right, great. So if y'all are ready, I'm just going to get started. Um, my name is Lily. I'm a member of the Stoke Collective. It's nice to see some familiar faces on this call as well as some new faces. I'm here with some of my colleagues. Jishva Patel is on the call. Maya Ross is on the call. And Jen Sandler will be hopping in shortly. And we, the last time we were at the school committee was when we were presenting our big report from a three-month-long equity assessment that we did within the district about a year ago. And we're here to share what has happened since then. Our scope of work for this year was shaped by that assessment. We're really excited to share with all of you some of the successes we've witnessed, some of the moments that we feel like we've learned from collectively and the activities we had a chance to participate in as we accompany the district in moving the needle on equity this year. So just something I want to reiterate is that we're at accompaniment. We, as Stoke, we use something that we call an accompaniment model, meaning that this presentation isn't going to be about what we did as Stoke. It's going to be about the progress that the district made. And we were on the journey with all of you together. And it's important for us to emphasize because so many people have done so much work this year to move culture, move the culture of the district towards equity. And we wanted to make sure we highlighted some of that work in this presentation based on the spaces we were able to be in. So that's sort of some framing to get us started. And just to say that this is probably one of the most challenging years that most people can remember. And the fact that the district hasn't shied away from doing this work is big. And so we just wanted to say that at the top, considering the context of this school year. So I'm going to pass it over to Jish and she's just going to do a little refresher on some of the goals we are hoping to work towards together this year.
Hi, everybody. Thanks again for having us. My name is Jishva and I will be on, I'll be sharing a little bit about the goals for this year. So these are, these may or may not look familiar to you, but this is, these are the things that we aimed for when we began working with you all and in the school district after that report that Lily was just talking about was finished. Overarchingly, each of these goals are working towards the overarching goal of wanting to support the district in doing equity work in better and more relational ways and in ways that are more accountable to the people of this district. So throughout the year, we've tried to remain pretty emergent in terms of the how we've worked to accomplish these alongside the district folks that we've been working with. And we'll be highlighting both the work that we've been part of as well as the places in the district, like Lily was saying, where these goals have been being worked toward outside of the scope of our work. So as you can probably tell from the pace that Lily and I have been taking, we're going to be moving through the slide deck relatively quickly. And we're going to try our best to highlight one or two major successes and areas of growth so that we can fit this presentation into the allotted time. So the first area that we're going to start with is the work that we did with Muddy Brook Elementary School. So coming out of last year's phase one assessment period, we were left with a feeling of there being a marked underrepresentation of what equity work needs to happen at the Muddy Brook level. So one of the main ways that we addressed this is by pivoting our scope of work to conduct a smaller scale assessment with Muddy Brook parents and educators. So the findings of those conversations were put together into a Muddy Brook Report addendum of the Berkshire Hills Report. And the findings of those conversations helped us to better reflect back to Katie Retsel and Cynthia Carey, how the work of Muddy Brook around equity can continue to be rooted in what families and educators see as being main priorities. Since that sharing of those findings, Katie and Cynthia have used our report to guide the making of goals for the next academic year and have had some conversations with paraprofessionals that work at Muddy Brook and have shared the recommendations that came out of the report back to families through the letter. In terms of upcoming steps that we'll be taking to share that information back, we'll be working with Katie and Cynthia to organize a conversation with families for the beginning of the next school year so that they can give a more conversational feedback on what those findings were and what the recommendations and goals for the coming year are. And there will also be support for Katie and Cynthia around holding conversations and discussions of the report with faculty, both through the professional development work that will happen over the summer, particularly at the end of June and at the start of the next school year. So I know that that was a lot of information, but I'm going to share it over to Maya to continue talking a little bit more about collaborative relationships in the community and that goal in particular.
Thanks so much. And I'm going to reiterate two things that you said, Jish, just because I know that there's going to be a lot of information that's on the slides, so we will have an opportunity for you all to read those outside of this if you're interested. But so that's the first thing. The second thing is that when Jishva shared our goals initially, she highlighted that we were ultimately setting out to help the district become more accountable to the people of the district. And so if we can look at some of the successes and the continue to grow stuff, thank you. So there were so many successes that came out of our time together this year. One of them being the Inclusion Task Force. So I know that's a group that some of you all are really familiar with and have had a chance to interact with. The group has met 12 times this year so far and has had a few meetings with administrators. And there's been a sense of hope that the policies and infrastructures will really shift based on the conversations that were had between the Inclusion Task Force and admin. So a huge success there, along with the hiring of Marina Dominguez at the Railroad Street Youth Project and America as the parent liaison in the district. But really Marina helping to work with Spanish-speaking students, building trust and also creating the language exchange program. And yeah, just really making sure that ELO students were brought into spaces like the Inclusion Task Force where they can really influence the school policy. And I think some of you all have had a chance to experience that impact as well. On the continue to grow side, so where as many successes that came with the Inclusion Task Force, we're still going to be looking for more collabor- or the group is still looking to collaborate more with admin. And so we'll be working with the Inclusion Task Force in our future work to be in conversation with admin on at least every other month basis. I think we can move to the next one. You're ready, Lily? Awesome. So in addition to the collaborative relationships in the community, also focus on equitable relational trust with parents. And I mentioned before, America as the parent liaison. And this was really one of the first concerted efforts on the part of the district. If we could just move to the successes and continue and grow. America as the established parent liaison. And so really, again, one of the first concerted efforts on the part of the district to think through how to engage ELO parents and also recently immigrated students in a way that has led to conversations in other areas, like a Spanish-speaking guidance counselor, a mental health provider, and really making sure that students who are ELOs and recently immigrated have the support that they need throughout the district. And then on the other side, there is still a lot of need, especially in the parent liaison as a consistent thought partner. So America, the current parent liaison, has been continuing to meet with folks at the district, with admin at the district. And really, in this next year, we'll be moving to, moving into a more consistent thought partner and consultant. And again, moving through these relatively quickly, but would really love for you all to take a chance, take an opportunity to read through some of these more after we move through all of the different sections. So I will pass it on to Lily.
Sorry, I'll thank you as I manage multiple screens. So I have the privilege to talk about some of the gains in terms of student leadership development. This was one of the goals that I got to spend the most time hanging out with, and it was amazing. The students in this district are incredible and so are the adults that support them. So really happy to share some of this stuff. So in terms of strengthening students' capacity to do their own, build their own groups that are equitable and inclusive, like that was sort of our orientation to working with students. We were really focusing on how do we build capacity with specific student groups and also accompany them throughout the year and also create opportunities for capacity building for students that are open to anyone, even if they don't see themselves as a leader. So that was sort of our charge. And then a lot of surprising things happened that were really great. So some of the successes in terms of student leadership development that we wanted to highlight is that we feel like there's a foundation now after this year of a leadership pipeline from the middle school to the high school. There's a lot to do with young people at the middle school and the high school having a chance to talk with one another and collaborate and skill build with one another, which happened in our training spaces, but also happened outside of the training spaces that we facilitated this year. Another thing we wanted to emphasize is the work that happened with the Student Advocacy Group. Again, this is something that I got to be really involved with and get to know the Abby and Julian and Paige really well. And the Student Advocacy Program, while we accompanied them, were able to develop a really clear vision and a strategy to be sustainable. And this is really important because their work is sort of the pilot for what does a student-led restorative practices initiative look like? What are some alternatives to punitive discipline that students can take where the goal is repair? And this is, this is a really important equity, equity shift and something that's been alive in the district for a while. But students were really at the front of figuring out what would that look like to be student-led? And a lot of work was made in that direction. And they have developed a job description for a future coordinator of that position. And admin are involved in the process of figuring out how to make that work. And they were able to make a presentation to faculty about the work that they do, which sounds like went incredibly well. And there's a lot of energy now to support that work moving forward at Monument. Also want to emphasize that we shared a tool with the Student Advocacy Program with that program and another training we did of doing one-to-ones, which is an organizing tool used to like, to do outreach in an equitable way. And just super happy to report that students at both the middle school and the high school have done one-to-ones before the year ended to build relationships across their school and start to build some shared understanding and shared excitement around moving the needle on equity altogether. Also just want to lift up the fact that this year, several affinity spaces for marginalized students and for folks who are really interested in being part of Culture Shift towards Equity started at DuBois Middle School. This includes the BIPOC Student Union, Social Justice Club, and a GSA were started or strengthened this year. And we just want to emphasize this because these are critically important resources for students who are marginalized and also students who are interested in being part of that culture shift. So we just want to give really big props to Beth Walker Thomas, Isaac Morales, and Zazu Aldous Shapiro for being the advisors of those groups and pulling them forward and advocating for those students and what those groups need to keep going. And quickly, just want to emphasize the establishment of a youth inclusion task force as part of the Inclusion Task Force, which has its own culture and organizational structure to make sure that youth are at the front of a lot of the conversations around what does it look, what does equity look like on the ground for students? Some places for continued growth is continuing to examine the current patterns of engagement of which students participate in student government, which students participate in clubs. We, we want students and also their advisors to continue asking questions about who's in the room and who's not in the room. And we're hoping to keep that at the top of the list next year. And we're also looking forward to offering, now that we have more of a sense of where student energy is and where students are grouping, to increase capacity for those groups to do their own outreach, to build their own relational cultures that really keeps students engaged and involved. And that's all students and not just students that are usually tapped for these sorts of leadership opportunities.
Thanks so much for sharing all of that, Lily. So another area that we spent a lot of time this year is supporting administrators in improving their relational practices. So some successes in this area were that admin team members have increased their level of collaboration and workshopping support that they provide for each other. They've gotten a lot better since the beginning of the year in terms of recognizing like, what are scenarios or situations that I can bring back to my colleagues to be able to talk through how, how we can improve our responses as a district? And in terms of adapting their meeting structures to reflect discussion priorities and support needs identified by the administrative team. This has looked like giving building leaders more time to meet for cross-collaboration as well as like skill sharing and sharing like approaches that they take with, with their common situations that arise in the schools. In terms of areas for continuing to grow, we know that admin meetings are often full of many different agenda items. And with that, it can be hard for problem-solving conversations to be discussed to their full extent in order to honor that there are some, there are also other like time-sensitive topics that need to be gotten to. So this usually means that a lot of the administrative team members leave those conversations wanting to continue them at another time or have a chance at some other point to follow up with one another. And we know that with the emerging issues that need quick resolution that come up in the day-to-day, it can be hard to make the time to make sure that those follow-ups are happening. So we encourage administrators to continue to figure out when and where those conversations will continue and who will be part of them and how to make time for them in intentional ways. The other pieces that we really want to encourage is we've seen how admin have crafted engaging conversations for their own faculty and staff members. And we encourage admin to bring those same practices into their meetings with one another so that these, every conversation that you're in can remain creative and dynamic and engaging. In terms of the problem-solving support that I was talking about earlier, in the sense of solving barriers to equity, we want to expand that resource and support that we've been providing to faculty and students at all three schools next year. And the way that we're planning on doing that is by holding weekly standing coaching sessions that we will be heavily staffing in order to support anyone who drops in for any support around problem-solving, a scenario or situation that's happening, that they're looking to further equity within. Yeah. And so with that, I'll pass it back to Lily.
Cool. So this goal here, we thought was going to be related to PD that we were going to do with the district. And actually, another really cool thing that happened is that there is so much in the way of best practices and skill and content knowledge within the district itself that teachers have to share, teachers and staff have to share with one another that we actually did very little of that, of our own PD, which we actually think is really cool. So I just want to emphasize that a big success from this year was a Professional Development Day on March 18th, which allowed teachers to do peer-to-peer learning, skill share with one another and come together as all three buildings and as a district and have choice in what sort of professional development modules they joined. And that was considered, we got to look at all the feedback. It was very well received and was a really great structure. And people wanted more and more of that. And so we just want to emphasize that, that what this showed us is that when, when staff have time to collectively plan and collaborate around equity issues, like problems get solved and skills get shared and that, that culture gets to grow. So just wanting to emphasize then how necessary it is for staff to have that time, whether it be in really intentional space and ILGs as a faculty, having different departments be able to talk together, like special education and general education practitioners swapping notes and also time on those half-days and full district days to do just that. And, and this is just, this is a strength within the district and we really want to emphasize how important it is and how valuable it is that that exists here and that teachers can hold that space for one another. And to add to that, we, we are in our, in the next year, offering some professional development that we want to really emphasize what diversity and inclusion-based relational practices look like and make those available to teachers as they want them, which is meeting facilitation for diverse groups, facilitating equity-related conversations and dealing well with the aftermath of difficult, difficult situations. So we do have some stuff that we want to offer up and it's stuff we've done in different pockets with a few people here and there. But yeah, but that's the sort of our PD goals for, for next year. And then this is the last thing and then, and then we're going to wrap it up. Thank you for being on this journey with us. So the last goal that we had was improving district-wide communication to build trust. So we want to emphasize, these are some successes that the district took on on its own that we wanted to uplift, which is the introduction and training around Lexicate, which is a translation app that teachers can use when speaking with, with family members or students who don't speak English. Student-led workaround introducing Parent Square as a better way of communicating updates about all three schools and that happening at, in the Monument Mountain Community and with student-led, there are students involved in thinking about how best to pilot that. And the Monument Mountain newsletters were translated into Spanish to make them accessible to students and families who speak Spanish. And this is an area where there's, there's room to grow. And we bring this up as sort of the linchpin of this project was what equity requires relational trust. And in order for students and parents and staff to trust that progress is happening, it's really important that that progress be communicated regularly. And so updates about progress around equity work to all stakeholders is really important and as well as providing adequate lead time for stakeholders to participate in district-led equity work. So they have an opportunity to engage if they want to. And just something that I want to emphasize as like one way that we'll be a part of helping is we started doing memos of our progress and like the work we were doing on a month-to-month basis to admin. And we are looking forward to expanding that to include all of these other equity initiatives that are happening in the different pockets of the district into one memo that administrators and others can share widely, including to the school committee so that that progress is known throughout the school and people can respond to it and engage with it. Great. Jen, are you with us?
I am with you.
Hi.
Yeah, so this has been a lot. Just to say that the district is obviously, has taken on a lot of different equity initiatives and has brought in a lot of different consultants. And each building is, has its own sort of strategies and projects. And so one of the, one of the things that has emerged is that there's a real need to articulate how a lot of these simultaneous DEI initiatives connect and how they fit into the existing structures of the district. And the challenge is that, I mean, this, it's sort of an embarrassment to riches in some ways. There's a lot of people working equity in the district. But the challenge with that is that, is, is, is that when these things aren't coordinated or communicated out effectively, folks can't, first of all, can't share successes and knowledge around what's going on and best practices and know where support can happen. And also when the district can't internally articulate how all of the different pieces fit together and articulate with each other and, and, and structures can't be shifted accordingly to make, make space for that. And it makes it really difficult to engage the community in these initiatives and to communicate about them and also to, for people to understand the need to continue success. So just to emphasize that we see a lot of, like putting together some of these pieces and communicating them out through, and which we're going to, we're going to start out doing through monthly memos as a real need for the district moving forward in order to make their equity initiatives, not just a bunch of things thrown at the wall, but really feel cohesive and, and, and be understood as cohesive and be used as a sort of cohesive strategy throughout the district. And kind of to wrap up. So we've already gone through all of these things, but just to wrap up. So our scope next year, the way that we hope to accompany the district, just to say like, you all have been, I mean, if, if there's one thing that you should take from this, this has been a lot of information, is that there's been a huge amount of work that has been going on. And even honestly, the, the challenges that we have seen come up, we don't see those as, as bad indicators. We see those as indicators that there's work going on. If honestly, in equity and inclusion work, if there's no tension, nothing's really happening. Nothing meaningful is happening. And so we've, our accompaniment has really got the need for, for really kind of continued work on the part of the district in a lot of the same directions and a few other directions that, that you all have also identified. So our scope next year includes continuing to accompany the Inclusion Task Force and their outreach efforts to, to really solidify what they've done and build ongoing communication with administration that was, that was started at the end of the year. Figure out a strategy to streamline the many parent engagement opportunities that exist in the district and develop those. We haven't, we're, we're interested in developing a more equitable coaching and accompaniment process for faculty, students, and administrators to be able to engage with us when things come up in a, in an efficient way that is accessible to everyone, expanding some PD offerings to deepen the relational practices. Quarterly teacher-led meetings, we're going to focus on, on, on making sure that teachers have that time and holding that space for, for teachers. and holding that space for, for teachers to do that work with each other. Capacity building for some of the student groups, continuing the amazing work that has happened there. And then communicating all this out and making sure that everybody's on the same page on a regular monthly basis. And we're hoping that, the last thing is that we're hoping at the end of this, at, at the end of next year, that we will be able to, to step in and do kind of a bookend equity and assessment report, more of a comprehensive report to bookend the initial one that we did last spring, so that the district can kind of take a look at itself and see what are really the, what's the progress that has been made from different people's perspective. And we, we do pretty in-depth ethnographic research and site visits and a ton of interviews and focus groups in order to do that. And we think that a two-year period is a, is, is long enough to see, see some real progress. We're trying to work our way out of a job and, and where you all are, are helping with that. So yeah, open to questions, apologies that this has gone long. It's been a long, a long year and a lot of work has happened and we didn't want to short any of it.
Great, thank you, Walden. Does anyone on the school committee have any questions for, for friends at Stoke?
No questions, just thanking them for all the work. I think it's personally been wonderful to know that they've been in the buildings and I'm glad that the work will continue. So thank you so much.
Anybody else? Comments, questions, thoughts of any kind?
Okay, great. Well, thank you all very much. We, we look forward to continuing the work and I appreciate the notion of putting yourself out of a job, though it'll, it'll make me sad because the, the work has been really fruitful and impactful. So thank you, we, we at least have another year going. And then for the broader community, e- even if they do put themselves out of a job, there's probably a, every few year checkup to do. And, and we'd certainly be happy to, to bring them back for that particularly because they understand our context so well. Okay, thanks again. Thank you. Talk soon.
We'll share the, the PowerPoint presentation with you along with the notes that we were reading from so folks can review it later. That was a lot to digest at once.
Great, thanks, thanks a bunch.
Have a good meeting.
Yeah. So I, I think what we're going to do now, and, and we jumped out of order because we had them for a particular timeframe and we had some technology issues, but why don't I give the meeting back to Rich to do the two sets of minutes? And then we'll start at the beginning again from the good news and go forward.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 5th and May 19th. Second? And second? Oh, we have to roll call vote, huh?
I have a list of names to him.
I can, I can move, William Fields.
Yes.
Jason St. Peter.
Aye.
Cory Sprague.
Aye.
And Hutchinson.
Yes.
I forget, Bodhi Man Baboni.
Aye.
And Diane Singer.
And Diane Singer.
Yes.
Motion carries, minutes of May 5th to May 19th stand approved. Do you want to go to the Treasury Report? Is that? Yeah. Superintendent's report.
Yes. The good news, a little good news on the district level and then all the rest of the work is happening at the school level. The Berkshire United Way extended their support for another year for our after-school summer, summer stuff. So we really appreciate Berkshire United Way and with a great site visit from Tom Bernard, their new CEO and, and the program director. So thanks to them for their support. Katie, what's going on at Marty Brook?
Let's see, so we have, we're wrapping up the year, planning for next year, of course, but for the kids, we have tomorrow, Richard Peter Group has come with our fourth graders. So there'll be four short plays that they churl in their different classes and those will be four tomorrow after, so that's exciting. We're planning a big deal, field day up at Monument next week, next Thursday, hopefully. It looks like good weather right now. We have a new therapy dog. We're doing a naming contest right now with the kids. I personally like Baron's best, but he's very cute. And then just moving into planning for summer PD, a lot of the teachers have chosen some extension type activities to work on, started this year. So we're excited to get things taken care of. And also we are looking at tiered support and behavior support at the building just to get burned up with Cynthia and I after one year of seeing the processes and we'll have some input from teachers to move into next year best.
Great. Ben, and I know you always have a giant list, if you could do the.
This one is short.
The brief list.
We did some really nice new trips with Audubon in the fifth grade, different kind of field setting, like the valley. Sixth grade, I'm going to kind of feel like a part of the community. Moving to seventh, eighth, 13th next year, so it's really nice lessons with seventh graders rising, eighth grade about changes, and the eighth graders actually got a really great visit in high school for sports coaches.
Cool. So Christie, do you want to go or right to Julian?
Well, usually Julian calls first and then I just.
You've told enough. Okay, good. So Julian, great.
I share your sentiments, I'll keep it brief. The hallways are quiet without our seniors, but our juniors are taking nicely to their new role as the oldest students in the building and are working with administration to plan for a great year next year. And that includes the infamous senior privileges. This last Friday, we celebrated our seniors with a final pep rally. We celebrated our seniors and then most importantly, the end of the year. Students of all grades were involved. We worked really hard to include students from all aspects and, and parts of the building in tugs of tug of wars, games of soccer, piety competitions and balloon popping relays. Promise tomorrow night, which is exciting for many. Our seniors are going to get to celebrate with their classmates once more. Members of our junior class are going to celebrate as well, our sophomores as well. But I don't believe any freshmen are going this year, so no one is going for the, the, the four-time crap. Students are engaged in their work. They're doing final projects with fun spring assignments, making ice cream in chem class or taking walks to the outdoor classroom or even around our campus. But it's definitely, I'm sure, a prime time for faculty and staff to keep those students engaged. So thank them and they're doing a great job at it. Senioritis spreads quickly through the building, so inevitably you pump junioritis, sophomoreitis and even freshmanitis, and I'm sure we're teacheritis as well. I was, I thought I was going to go first, so I just mentioned the great work Stoke was doing, but we have, we're stoked out. Our National Honor Society is doing a lot of community service and is displaying the values of what Monument students are and what we work to be in the community and providing for elderly citizens and, and many groups. But additionally, other student groups like Charlie's Fund are working hard to bring what we're doing at Monument out into the community and even supporting our students in our, in our building. And then finally, just spirit is high as the, the light of summer comes in and everyone is excited for these celebrations with graduation to follow this Sunday, performances from our band and our chorus. Those of you going to graduation, I know you all are, the chorus performance is amazing. It will bring tears to your eyes. And then we have a recognition this upcoming week for scholarships that our junior students applied for and were awarded. And then we also had a celebration this morning for scholarships that our seniors applied for and were awarded. So a lot is going on, but all, all very good stuff.
Great, thanks, Julian. Christie, do you have a?
I have one thing. Julian covered a lot of ground, which is wonderful. What I do want to share with the school committee is that we did receive news this week that we were awarded a rethinking grading initiative grant from the state and that is in line with our work in our ninth and 10th grade teams to shift proficiencies. This is coming from the state of Massachusetts. Hoping that Massachusetts is kind of looking this direction and we're at the, at the lead of that across the state. So we're super excited that we received that grant and it's a two-year grant, so it's a one-year grant, shifting our grading practices. Only five schools in the county helped for it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a really big deal. It's sort of embargoed, so we weren't supposed to talk about it, but you might not have seen that. So we're, we're, we're really going to talk about it in, in two weeks, moving on. There was a subsequent email after the initial.
It's that, that's a little busy.
Oh, oh, wow. Yeah, so that, that's great. Yeah, no, we're, we're going to do that. So the only other thing I wanted to share, because we sort of alluded to it, but, but it's a, a really remarkable number. The scholarships that were awarded today were in the amount of $318,000 and change, and that's all community-based, so that doesn't include scholarships that colleges and universities are giving to students. That's private scholarships, the Rotary Club name scholarships. And it, it, it's really remarkable and, and a number of them are, are connected to people who passed away too early. And if you've not been to that ceremony, it's, it's a really powerful one to go to. A lot of joy and a lot of, a lot of remembering. So, so very neat. What we're going to move to now is an introduction, and I sent this to you by email. I'm actually going to have Keith introduce himself. And sorry, Keith, you got behind the Stoke people and, and when that happens, your, your commute doubles. So I'm so sorry about that. But Keith is a, is a current chemistry teacher at the high school and previously taught at the, at Du Bois, at the middle school. And we recently hired him as our new assistant principal for career technical and vocational education. And I asked him, he put together a really thoughtful introduction, because he'll do it better than I will, to tell you a little bit about himself and, and what he's starting to work on. So welcome, Keith, to this group.
Thank you. So I've had a really delightful three and a half years here in the district as a middle school science teacher and this past year at the high schools as an eighth and chemistry teacher. The students just blew me away in the eighth grade, like just right out, right out of the gate. They were problem solvers, they were, they had great teamwork. They had so much background knowledge and so much curiosity that, that I really, they really got hooked on the district. And I have a lot of colleagues that really approach their work with just so much passion and enthusiasm that that too is contagious. So the new position's exciting to me. It's my hope that as a district, we can leverage the promise of CBT, CBT programming to increase students' post-secondary opportunities. So in the next few months, I've actually already started to talk with teachers, better understand existing programs. I will be connecting with B W D S D on CBT and connect with local consultants. And there's a wealth of anomalies just, just right on campus that it's sometimes like drinking out of a higher hose, but I'm sure it'll calm down. And I'm looking forward to meeting the, the CBT advisory council, talk to local business people and students and families. So they're looking for areas for growth. So, you know, specifically my charge is to grow our chapter 74 programs and to explore a range of possibilities as they relate to a new school and potentially a combined high school, which is also a pretty exciting part of the portfolio. So in addition to all that, I would really like to continue my work creating space for student voice through the student advisory board that I've been working with them over the spring. And also to be a resource for the high school as we continue our equity work around proficiencies and de-leveling, which I have a lot of experience with on the teacher side. So I'm hoping to come back and I'll go over and share some updates and expanded thoughts.
Great, thank you, Keith, and welcome aboard. Anybody, it's a little early, so we shouldn't take them over the coals, but does anybody have any early questions for Keith?
I have an easy one, I think, just because I've been getting it from people because there's confusion over the vice principal title. And so people have been saying, how is your role going to differ from Peter from Cal?
Yeah, we're still, we're still working on that, on the admin team. But I think that, you know, my main focus needs to be to grow in our CBT program. But I, I'm, you know, committed to doing whatever it takes to be part of the leadership team at the high school.
Yeah, so we did need a planning conversation about just eliminating job responsibilities. Peter Krasinski's main primary focus is student affairs and student management. And he and I have tried to share even if that alluded to responsibilities for teacher evaluation. That's been a challenge when his focus is supposed to be so much on the student side of the work. And I think like Keith will certainly be able to support some aspects of programs specifically as it relates to the career technical. There are other businesses as well that I think sometimes the three of us will be a team and sometimes we'll decide who is responsible for which ones want to help the administrative work and buildings.
And, and so in simplest terms, the, the explicit portfolio will be the two chapter 74 vocational programs, the possibility of, of creating four more programs and then programs that fall under the sort of broader CBT thing. So the early childhood, technology, or horticulture and automotive, and then some of the career pathways and, and internship opportunities. Okay, and then the thing Keith mentioned, the sort of student voice piece, he's got a strong background there that typically might not sit with assistant principal for CBT, but, but demonstrated success, interest, and it's important to the district, so we'll make some space there. Cool, all right.
I also just, I just wanted to say, I think I'm sorry, that in the context of just the building principle, the, the work connected to the building project that's coming our way, the regionalization work, that my ability to take a lot of the CBT, even like grant work, I don't know if people realize how many programs we have connected to all of this programming and shift that off of my site will be very helpful for, for me as a building principal to then be able to go more focused to some of these larger projects that are, as a district, are really important.
Great, okay, are, are we good? So the next one, I'll have Kate explain this, but it, it's a request to approve an additional speech language pathologist and Kate's online tonight. Kate, could you just give a little context and then after you do it, I'll add anything else that's needed?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is actually, though it's, it's a new position, it's really a shift. This goes back to in the fall when I asked you guys about adding a speech language pathology assistant, which you graciously said yes to, which was fantastic. And you know, we've really struggled to fill positions across the board this year and that was one position that we have not been able to fill. So the, the needs that I outlined in the fall that we, we had for that position have gone, it, it's been challenging on our, our team that we've got because we haven't been able to get that assistant in to support them. In the meantime, our referrals and initial evals have increased by about 190%. And so that's another piece that our current team is working with. Another factor in this is that we have a program at the high school that we have struggled to staff. It's a program for students with significant disabilities. And our plan for next year, a piece of that plan is that we're going to move one of our speech language pathologists into that program for halftime. So by moving her into that halftime, we're losing that piece of her work. And we feel that if we shift away from the SLPA, the assistant position, and bring in another full-time SLP, speech language pathologist, that should cover our needs.
One, one thing that Kate didn't quite underline, the, the, the speech language pathologist who she's moving into the part specialized position holds both licenses.
My apologies, that's correct.
Kate, we have a motion to approve the additional speech language pathologist position. So move? Second?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion or certainly comment for Kate or anything?
Thank you. And we'll withdraw the SLPA, the assistant posting, that'll be gone now.
Do you want me to?
No, no, I have it ready.
We'll be able to fill this position.
I think there's a greater likelihood we'll fill a full-time speech language. speech-language pathology position than a speech-language pathology assistant position. And clearly, I need to see one.
All right, so a roll call vote. Corey Sprague?
Aye.
Diane Singer?
Yes.
William Fields?
Yes.
Bonnie Von Mafoni?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
And I go, yes, unanimous.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So the next one, I'll try to explain. We have invested in stipended teacher leadership positions in the district for quite some time. And we're proposing that we change them slightly. So there are two in front of you. One for instructional lead, and I'll go through the changes on that. And then one for an SEL lead, which is social-emotional learning, which is taking the place of what used to be called a team coordinator. So the instructional lead is largely the same. There are a couple changes that are crossed out, or one that's crossed out, and then a couple addition bullet points. So one of the bullet points is improved student learning outcomes through improved academic instruction and assessment. And then another one is instructional practice coaching peers. We're having folks do up to five days of summer professional development. And we're saying that the Director of Learning and Teaching will meet with them at least once a month. So that, I think, is fairly straightforward. The second one is the SEL one, which I don't happen to have in my package. John, can you just talk through the changes on that one? Give it something here, or I'll grab one, too.
Sure.
All right. So the big change is the name change from teacher-team coordinator to social-emotional learning lead or SEL lead. We added demonstrated knowledge about the professional and community resources in the school and district, collective, in the job goals, collectively supporting lead the school improvement plan and district improvement plan initiatives. And then provide input to organize and prioritize professional development related specifically to SEL. We took out facilitating spending of professional development and supporting substitutes. And we added increased wellness and SEL knowledge and skill for staff, meaning increased student opportunity and outcomes. Again, five, up to five days in the summer, they'll meet with the building administrator, which could be a principal or assistant principal. They'll do some research and preparation. They'll organize the curriculum around SEL advisory morning meetings. It's called different things in each building. And then engage in school-wide discussions around it. So I think it's a nice shift. We still anticipate talking about this additionally with the union, but we'd like your support going into those conversations.
Kate, do we have a motion to approve revisions to exhibit the job descriptions, instructional lead, and social-emotional learning lead?
Prove.
And the motions are second?
Second.
Corey with the second? Any debate or discussion? No questions? And we'll move to about that. Corey Sprague?
Aye.
Diane Singer?
Yes.
William Fields?
Yes.
Bonnie Von Mafoni?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
And I go, yes, the unanimous.
Okay, great. Thank you. So the next one is a hard one, right? And we talk about it often, and I'm sorry we're talking about it again. And I put in, it's about school safety, right? And I put a memo in the packet that you have, and I'll go through that. But the context is so terrible that since I've written the memo a week ago, there's now been another shooting. It wasn't in a school, but it was in a hospital, right? And probably before our next meeting, there'll be two or three more shootings. We're in a very, very difficult time in this country, particularly in schools around school safety. So I'm gonna tell you some of what we're doing, and some of you who are at the public or the press are gonna say, can you tell me the exact plan? And my answer is no, I'm not going to tell you the exact plan because I don't wanna telegraph what we're trying to do to somebody who wants to do our students or staff harm. So I'll talk around it. If people on the school committee wanna meet in executive session about the exact plans, I'm super happy to do that. But the more I read about this and the more work we do around it, we have to keep some of our cards close to our chest, right? There are two sort of basic ideas. One is softening and one is hardening. And they seem like they're in opposition to each other, but they're actually, or can be, quite complementary. So softening is this notion, and people describe it lots of ways, but if you build deep relationships within a community and with students and each other, then students talk openly and you find out who's at risk or who's hurting or who's disconnected, and that informs decisions you make. So we do a lot around softening. That's what the SEL stuff is. That's what advisory is. That's what checking in with people is. They're, and I see all our principals do this at different times. They stand at the door and watch every single young person walk in and make eye contact. And you know who's having a good day and who's having a bad day. And that's better than any metal detector you could have. You look somebody in the eye and you see where they're at. So that's, that's part of it. We're doing all these things I outlined, lots of advisory. People are all getting trained in mental health first aid. We're continuing our work with Ruler and Yale. We're working collaboratively with sort of every organization under the sun. There's our collaborative care approach. There are deep connections to the Green Center and Jones and almost anybody you can think of. And then when we see habitual behaviors, we track it and flag it and dig in and try to hold and support and listen to young people, and in many cases, to families, too, right? So that's sort of the whole softening side. We've also added several clinical staff. And it may be coming back to you in the fall for one more position. And then I promise I'll stop. On the hardening side, our work is really informed by our partnership with the Great Barrington Police Department, particularly Chief Story and Jim Bragg and the Staples. And Steve and I, the assistant principals, and sometimes the principals meet pretty regularly to talk about that. We conduct drills. You saw, right, like we had a big drill scheduled for the day after the Texas shooting, and I had to cancel that, right? Because a drill in and of itself is traumatizing. But the drill the day after 20 some people are shot is outrageous. We will, we will start doing those again. We've worked through this Alice approach. It used to be you just sort of hid, and now you hide and fight back a little, right? And at the right time, you open a door or a window and run, run through the woods. We have buzzer systems and cameras in our schools. We're doing a lot of work around threat assessment. And what that is, we're reinforcing exits and entrances. Without going into detail, some of our buildings are a little more vulnerable than others. You may have noticed that the Great Barrington Police are having a much more active presence in and around the schools for about the last two weeks. That's gonna continue through the end of the year. And I'm gonna continue to meet with Chief Story about that through next year. And by August, when school opens, we'll likely have a new anonymous reporting system where if students or families or community members have concerns, that goes to a trained switchboard that then gets referred to several of the leadership team in the district so we can act on it. And that's, that's seen to be high-quality and well-respected. We're sitting on some resources from the Department of Justice, which is particularly focused around this. We're working on that. And we're continuing to reflect on our approaches and seeing how that evolves. With the amount of time we have left in the school year, I don't think we're gonna squeeze in an active drill right now, but anticipating hopefully a slightly more normal year next year. We'll get to those early in the fall before the weather turns. We need a lot of work to do as a country and a community. Thankfully, we're in Massachusetts, and the context is much better than in many other states in the, in the country. But it, the, if you really think about the enormity of this and the magnitude of it, if you actually take the time to do it, you're just gonna burst into tears. It's, it's terrible. And that we have to train kindergarten students to not be shot is overwhelming. We'll continue to do it, and I hope that we see additional change at the state and national level. I rarely lobby for things politically, and I don't own much orange, but apparently tomorrow is where orange day. So if you own anything that's orange, tomorrow might be a good day to wear it. Any questions about safety? And again, I'm happy to respond, and I'll respond in detail where it's a progress.
I guess my question is just if you could provide some detail about like communication from the school? And is there sort of an approach to what warrants communication and what doesn't? And then what warrants communication from the whole district, from you or from an individual building principal? Because I know things go around in the hallways, and there's rumors, and absolutely things are said every day. And I'm not sure I can say that any communication comes from the school.
Yeah, all sorts of things happen every day, right? Johnny looks at Sally the wrong way. It's like I'm the lowest point of escalation to, there's a fight or an incident or a threat. Typically, we try to get ahead of the rumor mill and with Snapchat and I shouldn't just blame them, but social media in general. But things like Snapchat, often your parents know about stuff before I do or your classmates do, right? I know about stuff within a minute or two. But when something happens, the word gets out. So we try to get ahead of rumors and send messages. But if anytime anything happened, we sent a message, it would be like infuriating, crippling, right? So if it's, most of the times, we sort of talk about it as something, a credible threat or a non-credible threat. And if it's, if it's minor, two kids get in a fight in a classroom, it's typically over and it's done. But if it's something more than that, we work with the police department or even occasionally the DA's office on stuff. And then a more formal message gets out. Because so many of us have connections across all the buildings, we tend to just be wicked transparent and let everybody know. Because if we don't let everybody know, then people are talking about it. At Price Chopper and Big Line, we just... We've been relatively lucky, and I think we support people pretty well. So the number of serious incidents is limited, but there have been some. And, no, and we can probably always, always communicate better, too, right? And it may be, like, it may be something violent. It may be an allegation of somebody using drugs or selling drugs in school. There's a whole, or doing vandalism, right? There's a whole, whole range of things. Other questions?
I was just gonna ask about the Department of Justice grant that we received for $800,000, if I'm correct. Without getting into too much financial aspect is, has a lot of that been used in regards to the hardening process that you mentioned in regards to the three buildings? And of course, the building that is most vulnerable is the oldest building, which is mine for now.
That's what we weren't talking about, Bill. It's true, right?
Okay. So we, that, I don't wanna get specific. So that money is, there is money there? And is there a chance that we're gonna get more? Or is that, is this all in a one-year program, or is it more than that?
No, it's, it's three years, and the money rolls over. We're starting to invest some of it. Some of it I'm fine talking about. We were gonna do some more radios and an enhanced antenna system. I could go back and look at all the details. But that's no secret that we'll have more radios. It's a good thing, right? And a lot of people know we have more radios. We have lots of radios. We're keeping an eye on you. And then, and then some of the other stuff, I don't particularly wanna talk about. But hypothetically, it would be about entrances and exits, doors and windows, things, things like that. There's even a whole school of thought that, like, and this is gonna sound crazy, that you can do landscaping in such a way as to, as to promote safety, right? So we'll see some things like that. So half the money is sort of for hardening stuff, half the money's for softening stuff. And interestingly, some of the work with Stoke falls under the softening, the softening stuff. And I love for people to know about all the softening things we're doing. Because I think that's, that's really good and should be known. I'm excited about this anonymous call system. It came out of the Sandy Hook Partnership, and it's like peer-reviewed, highly rated, well-recommended, and it doesn't end up, it's set up in a really statistic anyway. I'm doing another call on it on Tuesday. But it doesn't, like, Christie or somebody in the high school could designate multiple points of contact, which might not even be the principal, but it might be all the clinical staff in the building. So the principal doesn't potentially become the bottleneck. And there can be built-in redundancy, so multiple people hear it. And it's, it's translated. And if it rises above a certain level, then there are also opportunities to get the police involved.
And my only comment on all this is that I'm glad we're in a school district that really prizes, in my history of it, in both teaching and on this committee, we prize communication with students and student relationships. And just talking to some students that I have in the last few years and my own granddaughters who are now in the high school, it's good to see that these relationships have gotten stronger as they've gone through and not just kind of, oh, well, that's what they do. This district is really good in regards to that. And as I said, I think my first year on this committee, that's a key to dealing with this issue, is the relationships that exist in the building between staff and students that allow people to have trust and open communication. that allow people to have trust and open communication. And I'm glad to see that Stoke is involved. And I wish that we could get more money and get more involvement, certainly with the community too, in regards to this open communication and trust.
No, I, I agree. And I've sort of worked on both ends of this. At one point I was involved in trying to remove metal detectors from schools. And the argument we made was that the metal detector maybe plays a role in an airport, but, but in a school, deep relationships certainly are, are much more meaningful. So we'll, we'll keep working on this. I'm sorry.
One observation, and maybe it's obvious, but I can't hurt to state, but obviously, you know, you canceled drills last week because of what that might do to students and be upsetting. But just understanding that increased police presence in the school can also be upsetting to students. And so making sure that we're working, we're working to offset that.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the things that the police department's trying to do is be seen in all sorts of different contexts. So they, they start early with the elementary school and it's the dog's name, Archer. There are all these dogs. It's hard to keep all the dogs straight. Archer, Lily, the staff, a lot of dogs. But so they're, they're trying to build relationships in the early grades. So they're explicitly not seen as, as threatening. But, but this is a guy or gal who has a cool dog and is here to, to help and, and protect us. And then a range of alternatives is, is young people get older, connected to explorers and, and other activities. Several of the current police officers were at different time, times coaches or assistant coaches. So, so that's, that's a neat thing. We're, we're working hard on that, but, but it, it's really complex, right?
Yeah, I mean, the only detail about that that's just such a minute thing is maybe we just make, make sure there's an emphasis that in those situations, they don't have to be without the gun. Because I know as a high school student, when the dogs come in still, seeing all of that regalia is very intimidating. So I'm sure you, for a kindergarten student, seeing an officer simply in their uniform without all of the...
Yeah, so we, we've talked about this about 100 times. And, and, and the, not you and I, but, but in general, the, the deal is with officers that, that they're trained. And when they're wearing the uniform, their, their, their gun is part of their uniform and they have an obligation to wear it. And it would actually put them in a terrible situation to be in a uniform without, without it. So in fact, I know that's hard and it sends mixed messages, but that's just, I, I've raised the same thing early in my time. And, and that's just, there are very few non-negotiables in, in life and that one is actually a, a non-negotiable, right? Now, now they may come in other times when they're not on duty and, and they just have t-shirt and shorts on. And in that context, they, they would not, would not need it. So we'll, we'll continue to work on this. I don't know, I'm a huge fan of Amanda Dorman, the poet. And, and I used all my restraint to not print a copy of her most recent poem, but, and read it, right? But I'll, I'll, I'll send it around to you if you haven't, haven't seen it. Her, her tone and cadence is quite remarkable always, but, but particularly in this recent one about, about what's happening in schools. So we, we will keep talking about it. Expect some additional drills and we'll try really hard to find this right balance where, where we're soft and hard, supportive simultaneously. Okay. You ready to move on to something light? Yeah, so I got a little COVID for you. Now, now, the good news is we were like peaking at 740 cases earlier, a couple of weeks ago per 100,000 or something, right? Terrible. And we want the magic number to be around 60, which is nowhere near. But as of today, the weekly number of cases is 352. So we're not out of the woods yet, but we're making progress. And then I, I think most importantly, the infection rate is down to 0.79. So for those of you who've been playing along at home, anything less than one is good and 0.79 is, is really pretty good. So we, we got work to do, but, but things are moving in a, in a, in a good direction and I hope that happens. So your guess is as good as mine, what happens with summer and tourism and, and prom and graduation and on and on. It, it looks to me like about 40% of our school community has at least tested positive once. So, so there are not that many more of us to, left to test positive. I don't know. So, so here's the next thing and, and this is, this is sort of interesting. The state is obviously rolling back its support for testing and funding going forward. And during the summer, for our summer programs, and we think we may serve in total something like 300, 350 students, we were able to secure self-test for both symptomatic testing in the building, but also for weekly at-home testing. And the cost of that's covered. So I think that's great. But we're going to be stepping away from pool testing in the summer. We're just going to be doing these at-home tests and, and symptomatic testing. As, as we look forward to next year, the, the state will stop supporting surveillance pool or self-tests. And schools can choose to purchase them ourselves through, or the district, through a statewide contract. And the support we've been getting from the CIC, the company that's been helping us out on this, will no longer be available. So we're going to continue to, or I'm going to continue to recommend people get vaccinated if they haven't and to participate in the various booster cycles as, as those are, are available. And for symptomatic people to do testing. And then the, the quarantine guidelines changed again. So it used to be if you tested positive, you needed to isolate and stay home for five days. Now they're letting you come back to school or work and wear a mask for five days. And then you're supposed to continue to wear a mask for the next five days after that. So I just sort of want to tell you where we are with this now. Before our next meeting, I'll, I'll do some math around what the cost of purchasing, I don't know, 20,000 self-tests would be? And if that's something we want to invest in or, or not? I did share with staff that the federal government is now setting another set of test kits. I ordered some, they're free. I ordered some the other day and, and they sent me 10, right? So that's another option too. So we'll do a cost benefit analysis and, and talk about it probably at the next meeting. But so we have a plan going into the summer. We may also have a, a number of tests on hand that haven't expired that we could at least start the, start the year with. Any questions about, about that? Okay. So the next one, I asked John to talk about this a little bit, are through the wide range of summer professional development opportunities. We've got a tremendous list of things. And, and I thought it makes sense for him to take a, a few minutes to do a quick overview of it.
Yes, thanks. One of the unique things about this district is the amount of professional development we offer over the summer. And I just wanted to point that out in that we have peers and exhaust lists. I won't read off all of them, but we have many things at the district level and then usually the schools have their own professional development that they're working with teachers on. And we really, you know, sort of offer teachers, hey, what are your ideas for professional development over the summer? We work with them and developing a plan for them to, to work together to basically improve their curriculum practices and just some happens. So at the district level, we have many things, many varied things. We have things ranging from safety care, which is our de-escalation training program. We're offering that research and initial certifications over the summer. We also have a work with our partners at GSP on proficiency-based rating and feedback. And additionally, with GSP, we're offering an online PD that they have, which is in that pursuing retro equity and education. And GSP is also working at the school-based level throughout the summer too, with teams at the school, at the school working on based rating and aligning proficiency with curriculum and developmental practices. We also have another GSP-led online module that is called designing a more equitable advisory system that folks that are middle school and high school are hoping to participate in. We're actually also working with mentors to develop a new to-be HRSD teacher guide, which sort of talks about all of the things that a new teacher in the new district needs to know and how the district works. It's not really a mentor program thing, but it's more educational for teachers to work with, office on campus, I think. We have two things lined up for English, English learner professional development. We have our in-house expert, Rita Johnson, our junior English language learner teacher, who's going to be doing some instructional practices and supports with teachers here in the district in two weeks actually, and folks are signing up for that already. We also have offering one through our partner, Collaborative Educational Services, from campus, excuse me, who has an online program entitled Building on a Culturally Cultural and Background and Knowledge of English Language Learners. That's another support they're offering for all teachers. And then we have our new teach orientation program, which is the day before all the other teachers come in August. That's August 24th. We also have first aid and skin guard training through operating to August for teachers and their professionals. And elementary school, Katie already talked a little bit about their tier support and behavioral process, groups that are working together. We also have a community connections group, which is this great program that they developed, which one helps students in the community to make connections, but also helps teachers have meeting time during the school day. We're trying to increase that meeting time next year. So they're developing extra curriculum that needs. We also have them working on SCL mapping, curriculum mapping, and a math back to literacy development that we really appreciated second grade teams are working on. And then at the middle school, we have more proficiency-based feedback workshops internally and with GSP. We also have, they're working on the WEP Boys Curriculum Project. And in addition to that, there's also the Boys of Legacy Project Institute that teachers will be working on there. And they have various summer projects similar to what we talked about at the elementary school. At the high school, we have things that are focused for the entire community, but also some things that are really targeted at grade teams in the, you know, the level of the proficiency work. We have curriculum development aligned, which is refining indicators aligned to proficiencies, developing rubrics and all that stuff. And we also have a UDL differentiating workshop, which we're working with our partner that we utilized before, Tony Morehead out of Eastern Penn State University, and that's really targeted at the ninth and 10th grade teams, helping them to work with their ability there and also targeted for ninth and 10th grade teams for a workshop with GSP and other consultants that are working there. In addition to that, we have grading practices, a team that is looking at transforming our grading system. We put up an announcement that we weren't supposed to, sorry, but that's sort of connected to that and I take total responsibility for that. We were busy all day.
Stop talking about it.
My bad, I'm not one. And then we also connect to another grant that we are talking about. Here you talk about connecting to the bar grant. We have rigor relevance and purpose group that is working on a lot of things, including cultural responses, teaching, and going to recruit this summer and sort of continuation of the bar grant work that we've been doing will be here and hopefully will be doing for a few years to come. And then also at the high school and, and soon joining with the middle school, now elementary school is a schedule team looking at schedule, future schedule changes that, that are being used.
I'm still here.
And of course, there's also course development that happens every summer with, with teachers, refining their curriculum, working together to use the partner, their, their classroom system.
And there's more, but I... Great, great. And any questions or wonders? We can also send around the, the list of opportunities. So if you want to click on links and, and dig into things, you can, you can do that.
I guess one question, just last year, right around the time we did an overview of summer program, I think that was a draft with our students. Is that something that you could possibly share or be, anything? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, we could share stuff. Last summer was sort of, sort of unusual because of the post-COVID thing. The, the big thing is project connection and, and opportunities connected to that. And then a potential opportunity tied to Simon's Rock and then some internships. The other thing is, I think you're probably aware of this, the, the jobs market is really wacky. And even the, so in the high school guidance new sweater, there like a list of 30 available positions. And, and one that sticks out is the town of Stockbridge is hiring people and paying them $20 an hour to do like light maintenance, which is a great opportunity, even rivals like the, being a lifeguard on a, on a not very busy lake. So, so this might be a really good summer for, for high school students to, to do some work, I guess.
Yeah, she, in particular, for me, that I just would like to highlight, one, Julian has actually been a part of planning and that's the Student Advocacy Program at High School, the restoring justice work. The students have been recruiting peers to participate in training this summer so that we can grow that work through the course next year. And actually, my dear friend over here, Mr. Wright, has been working with our partner at Up For Learning to organize student training at the end of the summer. It'll be in August to kind of launch this for next year and our student advisory board work, but to provide students training and facilitation skills, because the last time we did that was in 2019 in the fall before the pandemic. So we're trying to see if that's, again, we launched, we grow that, that work with students we're doing.
Yeah, we definitely put something together. A lot of hope it last year was sort of an online base and non-campus base and much more we're doing this year in campus base. Kind of falls under the umbrella.
You have the regional social planning board update here or not?
Just to flag two dates, the, I just had a reminder about...
Is it the 28th or yesterday?
Yeah, yeah. The, the 28th and the 30th. They're going to be two big online facilitated community conversations on those days. community conversations on those days. I, I sent it out, I'll send it again. I'll send it many more times. But if, if folks could participate in one of those, that would be, that would be great.
Any subcommittee reports?
We did the ability rounds.
Hey, what do you got?
I know it's been a long meeting, so I'll be quick again. Question, obviously first on building security. I'm not going to get into a lot of it because Peter, I go to a lot of what we're doing today. But needless to say, we spent pretty good time on that, physical aspect of the school. Second thing is the playgrounds. All three of them are then constructionally inspected. And highlighting changes or fixes we need to do for the summer. Steve's going to have all three playgrounds in each building, up and stuff. Let's see, the next thing, H-back in the elementary school. Again, we're converting to just a new community, communication board. The one put in originally is 20 years old, coming out dated. So that'll be done this summer. And finally, the chiller is going out a bit this week. And that hopefully will be done over the summer. And the middle school, everything's going there over the summer. We can do some upgrades in libraries, well, some student desks, et cetera. High school, H-back, we continue to upgrade that as best we can. Other big thing, the high school's the wifi. Again, over the summer, there should be significant improvements outside. So we're hoping that we'll be able to be used at the greenhouse as well as a lot of the athletic units. Also, the freezer, the freezer has wifi, which in the past, you know, has been a potential problem because of the freezer, those thousands of dollars of food there could be a problem. So that's all up to date. And Steve has been hubris into his phone. So at 3:00 AM on Sunday, there's no excuse. Let's see, the wastewater super facility audit came back. All good, there's a few minor footstep we're getting. See, this is working out, that went well. And then again, the summer plans. Remember, we went to high school, we're going to upgrade the JV softball field. Turn the infield into a, you know, clay slash dirt or whatever the, no grass infield there.
Just on the other side of tennis courts?
Yes.
On ice?
Yeah, so that's, that's a big one. Also, here in the soccer drop, some first floor, the sped life skills program is going to be going. So we're going to do some upgrades there and getting that going. And it's pretty much about it. One last thing, we'll put the weight room in the high school. That's a small little weight room. It's going to be hopefully turned into a training room where, you know, we'll be training, be able to get some, like, you know, take you in an athletic training situation. So we're at something that, for sure, money, that should be hopefully beneficial for all the kids, both in athletics and even athletics. A big meeting, because that's something I'll put in a couple of minutes.
Any other subcommittees?
And... Super redundant evaluation met just now. And we went, spent an hour with Peter going over his goals and where he is with them and where we're going in the future. We should have a report in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay. No? I, I just have one other thing. This is sort of late breaking news. And this is complicated, but I just want to flag it because it'll be a big community issue. The Monday is the Great Barrington Town Meeting, which is great. And it's at 6:00 PM in our parking lot. Our baseball team also has inevitably a home game on Monday. And at the same time, we can't move the home game to Sunday because it's graduation. And we're not sure if we can move it to Tuesday. So I will be spending tomorrow morning problem solving that. And I don't know what the answer will be, but I will, I will share that. But the, the downside of having the town meeting in the parking lot is we can't use the parking lot for, for the baseball game. So we'll come up with some answer.
Finance and not meet, we're meeting before the next meeting. So we'll have a report then.
Any older new business?
I just got one, the personnel report. So yes, you asked us to, to start putting vacancies to be filled. And, and so we did, and there's a whole list of vacancies. But the really good news is we've been interviewing. And I can't say that we, we filled one position, the high school special education position. So we could cross that off the list. And then there are three, maybe four other positions that we're close to closing on. A science position at the middle school, a health position at the middle school, and a music slash strings position. So that's great. Ben, just for my man, can't keep them all straight. We don't, we're not close to closing on the math position yet.
No, we haven't had any actual cadence yet. But we're looking for some more rounds and hoping.
So, so in, in practical terms, what that leaves is a math position at the middle school, a general music course position at the middle school, and then a bunch of paraprofessional roles. So, I'm sorry, kindergarten at the elementary school. But are you, are you scheduling interviews yet or not quite yet?
No, it closes Tuesday.
Okay. Yeah, great. So we're making progress. And, and there's summers that we've gone into with multiple vacancies, particularly historically in science almost every year. And it'll be nice to not go into the summer with those vacancies. So now that really is it for me.
Any older new business? With that, we stand adjourned by unanimous consent.
Thanks, everybody, and a good night.